He's dated girlfriend down there. She was from that. How many times you get spending with him?
Owner of the house.
Yeah, we got eight daughters.
Oh, just, just in the pressure still.
That's just for your. Have you talked to her?
Yes.
Gentlemen, everyone ready?
Yep.
To my right.
You being nervous.
Yes.
In that case.
Whack them all.
Shall I? Manager Moll, Cindy, ready to roll? No, no, that's okay.
Yes.
Are you ready? No, okay. All right, a call to order. Our regular meeting for Tuesday, July 16th, 2024, it is 6:04 PM. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Haupt to do the invocation for the board as we seek wisdom and guidance into the business of the people.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking for wisdom and guidance in all decisions that we make on behalf of our citizens of Iredell County. We ask that you continue to bless the United States of America. It's the best country in the world, Lord. We're not perfect. We need to ask for prayers for all involved in Saturday's incidents. There's a family lost a father and a dad and husband. Pray for President Trump and full healing and all involved, Lord. Give this country civility and grace and allow us to get back to where we once was, Lord, where we can agree to disagree and play in the same sandbox without hating one another, Lord. Helps keep you at the forefront of every decision that we make in our decisions and for this country, Lord. And thank you, Father, for our many blessings, Lord. Thank you for the rain today. Bless our farmers and bless all involved that helped make this country what it is. Bless our military and emergency services, Lord, and bless our citizens. Help us to serve you in all that we do, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
We stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Manager Moll, would you please go over any adjustments for our agenda this evening?
Yes, ma'am. We have one adjustment and then a few just clerical paperwork issues. The first item is addition under administrative matters, which is item 8.15, and that is to add the appointment of Cindy Nicholson as deputy clerk to the board. Item 8.3, that has an accompanying resolution, which we reviewed at the four o'clock meeting, but that resolution was included in the packet. We just broke it out separately for the board to read that separately, but that was agreed by consent. And then item 8.5 on the dais before you was an amended proposal, which spelled out the outdoor farmer's market for the fairgrounds proposal, and that's going to be one that we'll talk about this evening. There were two items that we are holding over for the six o'clock meeting for administrative matters. The final item is instead of adjourning this evening, we'll need to recess because we will have the annual report to the people on Monday, July, uh, July, yes, Monday, July the 22nd at 6:00 PM at Cooperative Extension. So just a reminder to recess as opposed to adjourning.
Okay. All right, motion to approve those adjustments?
Take the motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you for that. We can continue down our agenda this evening. We do not have presentation of recognitions, Lord, but however, we do have appointments before the board this evening. Manager Moll, would you please go over those and get those started?
Absolutely. The first item is a presentation from Jack Jones, which is Iredell County 4H Youth Delegate to Youth Voice, and I believe Nancy Keith, are you going to come up with him as well?
Adrian.
Adrian, would you come up and, and come on up, Jack, and we'll have her come up, and she'll give you a quick introduction, and then we'll hand it to you.
Excellent.
Good evening, everyone. This is Jack Jones. He's a member of the Lake Norman Youth Council and will be representing Iredell County as the youth delegate at the NCAA C annual meeting in August.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jack Jones. I'm a 15-year-old rising 10th grade homeschool student and a resident of Statesville. I regularly volunteer my time with local ministries and community-sponsored events. I have been a member of the Lake Norman Teen Council for three years and currently hold the board position of recreational coordinator. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about a topic that holds immense significance for the future of our communities, the importance of youth involvement in local government. Our involvement in local government is not just beneficial, but essential for the vitality and sustainability of our community. First, let's consider the role of local government. It's the level of government closest to the people, directly impacting our daily lives in countless ways, from maintaining our parks and roads to ensuring public safety and providing essential services. You, uh, local government. Sorry. Local governments are responsible for creating environments where we can work, live, and thrive. The importance of local government cannot be overstated. It is where policies meet practice, where decisions made have immediate and tangible effects in our neighborhoods. Local governments are not, local government officials are not just distant figures. They are our friends, neighbors, and fellow citizens. They understand our unique needs and concerns, making them best positioned to address local needs and issues effectively. Yet, for local government to function at its best, it requires the active participation from all segments of the community, especially from our youth. The importance of local government, sorry. Youth bring fresh perspectives and innovative ideas. We are often more open to new approaches and technologies which are, which can drive progress and modernization in local governance. In a rapidly changing world, this innovative spirit is crucial. Young people are digital natives adept at using technology to solve problems and communicate effect efficiently. By involving them in local government, we can harness these skills to improve public services and engagement. Involving youth in local government fosters a sense of civic responsibility and empowerment. When young people are actively engaged in the decision-making process, processes in their communities, they are more likely to develop a lifelong commitment to civic participation. This engagement helps to build a more informed and active citizenry, which is the foundation of a healthy democracy. Our involvement also ensures that policies and programs enacted today will serve future generations effectively. Young people have a vested interest in the long-term outcomes of local government decisions. Our participation ensures that issues such as educational, such as education, environmental sustainability, and economic opportunities are addressed with our own futures in mind. By giving us a voice in the decision-making process, forward-thinking policies can be created that address the needs of all citizens. When young people see that their contributions are valued, it fosters a greater sense of community and belonging. This inclusivity can help bridge generational divides, promoting a more cohesive and resilient community. It also combats the apathy and disillusionment many young people feel towards politics and governance. To facilitate youth involvement in local government, accessible pathways for participation must be created. This can be achieved through youth councils or advisory boards that provide formal channels for young people to voice their opinions and contribute to policy discussions, promoting or even requiring civic education in schools to ensure that students understand how local government functions and the ways in which they can get involved. Additionally, local governments which should strive to create a welcoming environment for young people, valuing their contributions and providing them with the support they need to succeed. We must also address the barriers that may prevent young people from participating in local government. These barriers can include a lack of awareness, resources, or opportunities. Leveraging social media and digital platforms can help reach and engage a broader youth audience. These tools can be used to disseminate information, solicit feedback, and encourage active participation in local government activities. By meeting young people where they are, we can make civic engagement more accessible and appealing. Young, youth involvement in local government can also serve as a powerful education tool. Taking part in governance provides young people with a practical understanding of political processes and public administration. This hands-on experience is invaluable as it equips us with the knowledge and skills necessary to become informed and active citizens. It also helps to build a pipeline of future leaders who are well-prepared to take on the responsibilities in years to come. In conclusion, the importance of youth involvement in local government is vital to a successful future for our community. Youth bring energy, innovation, and fresh perspectives that are key in addressing contemporary challenges. By bringing fresh ideas, fostering civic responsibility, and ensuring future-oriented policies, youth can significantly enhance the quality of local government. I would like to thank you all again for the opportunity and privilege of speaking here today.
Great job.
Excellent, excellent.
I look forward to it.
Before you go, I get to ask you a question, though, if I may, please. Uh, thank you, though, for, you brought up some tremendous points and a wide range of things that I wish we'd hear more often spoken. What would you recommend for us as a board? I know, um, Manager Moll and I have oftentimes gone into classrooms and speak, and you're right that the feeling of politicians is oftentimes viewed negatively.
Yes, ma'am.
How would you encourage us as a board to be able to reach more of the younger adults, even voting age or even younger, to be a little more inspired, to be active in the community? What would, what would you recommend for us? How could we do more to, to reach, reach people? From you, what inspires you? Do you feel like, because I know attending our meetings may not be as exciting as thing to do, um, two Tuesdays out of the month, but is there something that you would recommend for us to do as far as a way to engage more often with youth?
I personally, um, I, I'm, I like involving myself because I like, I have a certain view for what I'd like to see our future in government, um, look like. I'd like to see a more, not as divided community as in the past. So I, I do it to say that I can maybe in the future, because I know I can't really now, but in the future, maybe create a closer, more developed community. Um, you guys do do a great job. I'm, an amazing job at community events, stuff like that. It's great. I think that maybe informing people more of how their contributions, I guess, not really contributions, they're, the way they.
Their interactions.
Their interaction, yeah. The way that they interact with people can maybe change what, like the things that they don't like, or maybe some, their voice makes a difference.
It does, and I think you speaking on that and having the opportunity and going to the NCAA C is going to take that to the next level, and I'm thankful for that, and I believe that you would be an inspiration to your peers, your friends, and they see you saying these things, and a lot of times I think people watch us for our actions, what we do and how we treat others, sometimes speaks more volumes than words actually do. So seeing you standing here doing something that takes probably outside comfort zone, it's not always easy to stand up and do things like that, so that's impressive. So we are very pleased to have you here this evening, and please continue taking those steps that inspire you, because in turn it's going to inspire others.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I want one question. Is, is your last name really Jones?
Yes, ma'am, or yes, sir, sorry.
I just wonder if he was an alias or something. I grew up just like you. My last name is Brown, so it's, uh, people always wonder if I made it up. Thank you, what you do. You're great, young, 15 years old, and staying before this much up here. I mean, that's, uh, you're really, you're doing a great job. And you know what? In a couple more years, there's a lot of us is going to be tired and ready to sit down. We need some new blood, so, so think about getting into local politics.
Stay involved, absolutely.
Yeah, it's huge.
Because I'll tell you that, um, being a first-timer into this is, there's, everybody, there's a lot of folks that'll come behind you and give you advice, but very few people are strong enough and, and brave enough to do what you're doing right now.
That's right.
Much less to the next level. So keep that passion, whatever it is that's, that's burning in you. I'd like to figure out how we attract more folks like you. Uh, you know, you look in here, we're doing the, the county's business, and, and look at our, our population tonight. Um, a good number of those were folks with you, and, uh, so, um, to hear someone of your age have that and, and understand that and willing to share that is, is phenomenal.
Thank you, sir.
Proud of that, young man.
Good job, Jack. I look forward to seeing you. I'll have breakfast with you at the NCAA C. Um, I'll be there on behalf of the board, and they always have a breakfast with you guys, with, with the members from each county. So I look forward to seeing you at the, at the NCAA C.
Me too.
Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mom and dad, you ought to be very proud, and I can see by the face you are, because I'm going to tell you, it's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Certainly.
Please.
I'll go stand up front with him. Y'all good back there?
Oh, we're good.
And Jack, I will say if y'all would like to stay, you're welcome to, but at any point you feel like the meeting gets too lengthy, you're welcome to, to excuse yourselves at any point, but, but if you have aspirations to continue in local government, please feel free to stay. Manager Moll, we have an additional presentation this evening?
Yes, we have a presentation from Laura Johnson on the Child Fatality Prevention Team Report.
Good evening. Are y'all going to be as nice to me as you were to him? Just kidding.
He deserved it, right?
It's always nerve-wracking when you get in front of this group. I even freak out when Ms. Neder is in my, uh, meeting, and she has to kind of, you know, like that, isn't she?
She may does too.
Yeah.
She is very supportive. I have nothing negative to say about Ms. Neder.
Well, we can give you a few.
She can't.
Correct.
And you won't. Please continue, Laura, with your.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Uh, first of all, my apologies for this being so late in the year. Thank you for adding me to the July agenda. Um, the purpose of our local child fatality and prevention teams is to identify deficiencies in the delivery of services to the children by different agencies. A lot of people think, oh, children services, that means DSS. It does not. It's across the, across the county. Uh, also making carry-out recommendations for changes that will prevent future child deaths, and then promote understanding of the causes of the children's deaths. Uh, very hard task to do, um, and I commend the team that we do have. So, um, this is always confusing to me, so I like to make sure everybody understands it, especially for the new members of the board. It is 2024. Uh, we are always a year behind, so in 2023, we reviewed child deaths from 2022. So, uh, that's why I try to highlight and, and bold the year. Uh, so in 2023, we reviewed a total of 24 child deaths. As you can see, 21 occurred in 20, in the year 2022, two that occurred late in the year of 2021, and then one child death that occurred in 2018. That's hard to say. Uh, when a death is pending, an investigation, a criminal investigation, or anything like that, there is always a delay, and that's why that 2018, uh, death was reviewed in 2022. I believe you have in front of you the cause of death, um, the different categories, and then the different ages, uh, and then there was a, a little bar graph. Um, so what the team is tasked with doing is after review, when we review each case, we hear from different community agencies and, uh, whether or not they were involved with that child, and then we try to determine if it is a system problem. System meaning, um, did DSS do what they were supposed to do, follow their protocols, if an open child abuse or neglect investigation prior to the death leading up to it, or, uh, was something missing in when the parents were involved with parenting classes, or the parent may have been involved in a criminal activity and was on probation? So we tried to come up with something, a system problem, we call it, a lot, sometimes it is way beyond our scope of recommendations, but we are tasked with thinking about it as a group and then coming up with maybe your recommendation. And so the first one we reviewed was a homicide of a child, and the system problem that we identified was the father of that particular child had already been involved in another child's death in another county and had actually served the time and was on probation. And so we questioned why he was allowed to be around these children unsupervised. Um, I know y'all, you've probably heard a lot about that, if a child goes into foster care and they meet with their parent for a supervised visit, that means somebody is always observing that. Well, in this case, we felt like that if a parent has been accused and found guilty of harming another child and serving time, that should be a condition of their probation moving forward. And so that is actually one of the recommendations that we made that goes way beyond what we can offer as a local community, but we have discussed that with, um, our state consultant, and they consulted with us on that because they thought that was a very good recommendation to bring up. So, and the next one was, uh, a suicide in a Hispanic family. The Hispanic family, the culture is we take care of our own, we stick together, and in this situation, there were signs that this child was depressed, uh, that maybe the family was, were not aware of resources. And so we tried to come up with some suicide prevention material or just anything that might, could be delivered to the school systems and things like that, so these parents could be educated as well. Uh, it's very hard to break into that culture. As a social worker for 30 years, it, it's very hard to break into that culture, and so any little thing that we might could offer to prevent this down the road, that's what our team worked on at the time. The next one is about unsafe sleep practices. I'm going to skip it because it's actually was one of our activities that I'm going to report about. So every year, we have to submit an activity summary, what we have done. We receive about four, $1,460 each year, and so we are limited in what we can do, but we do try to do something. Some materials, such as suicide prevention, a lot of that material is free, and so we can get that, download it, make our own copies or whatever. Uh, a lot of the agencies will make their own copies, and we bring them together, and then we distribute them. Uh, so we, we have to report on what we do through the year. Also, after each meeting, we meet six times a year, after each meeting, we have to formulate a report, I'm giving air quotes, on each child that we reviewed. Little bit of brief detail, and then any of those system, uh, issues or recommendations that we would like associated with that child. And then we also are tasked with keeping a full team, and that can be very time-consuming. Uh, this is a state man, a lot of these positions are state mandated, and so a lot of communities, uh, and community agencies, and then the county agencies don't realize that, and so we're tasked with trying to fill these positions. And so this year, we added Jessica Smith. We've always had somebody from the school system, but she has been real instrumental in coming in and being able to attend every meeting. Caroline Hager from the Health Department, uh, you may know her with the Safe Kids Initiative. She is chair of that, and so we felt like she would be a good, uh, person to add, and she is the review coordinator. She's like my, um, assistant kind of thing. She comes up, she sends all the emails out and things like that. We also added Dr. Katie Hartnik, a pediatrician with Contegra Health, and then Gina Jordan from the North Carolina Office of Chief Medical Examiner. She has been really big in talking through, um, scenarios that we have no idea what that means, and she, and even, even to the point of, I hate to talk about this, but even to the point when a baby has died, and at what point is SIDS taken off the table, or is SIDS looked at and things like that. So they have been very good to add to our team. So our activity was we purchased, um, pack and place, and we partnered with the Iredell County Partnership for Young Children in offering, they do classes, they have a pampered pantry program, say that three times in a straight in a row, where you can go and get diapers and wipes and things like that. And so people in that program that wanted to attend a training about safe sleep and other resources, community resources, because we, you know, we got to give them a bag full of goodies, if they attended that, then they got a free, uh, pack and play. And some people had children under the age of, uh, four, maybe three, they got two. So we partnered with them, and we were able to get, finally get rid of all of those. Uh, so that worked out really well because we don't want to just give somebody something and say, go with it. We want to educate them on safe sleep because we know that safe sleep issues have been an issue over the past, and so we try not to focus on the same thing more than once every, you know, two, three, or four years, and so we try to break it up. But, um, so that's my presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
Now, I mentioned that I'm on, on that team as well, and it's eye-opening to have the discussions. Um, children don't come with instruction manuals. We hear the different challenges. Um, I think some of the things that we've come out of there with is realizing the importance of prenatal care.
Yes.
The, the importance of proper child safety seats, and just recognizing that it is well worth it to have the conversations, um, and look for ways. I realize we are discussing things that happened several years ago, but they are things that are still happening currently, so the discussion is still important. Um, I appreciate the team's effort, and Chief Webster, who's sitting out there as well as on that team.
Yes.
Um, we come together and have difficult conversations, but it's, it's needed, and I'm glad to have an opportunity to serve and appreciate you having the, the information this evening and updating us on the board. Now, I'll ask my other members if there's questions or comments.
Well, I'm going to ask you a question because I'm old, and I've, I've got kids, and I've got grandkids, and my whole life, they changed things back and forth, back and forth.
They do.
Maybe sleep on his belly or on his back.
Back. Back, yeah.
See, when I was, when I had kids, you had to put them on the belly. Then it went to back, then it went back, then it went back, back, so.
And that was part of the, the pack and plays had the proper, and it comes with the instruction book with it too, but you're exactly right. Things is what is the current recommendations?
And I'm too old, it doesn't matter.
On their back, in a onesie that will keep them warm, because you do not want any blankets or pillows or stuffed animals, and you want a flat fitted sheet, nothing else.
Stick with animals.
Just in case I want to have more kids now, no.
Oh, we stick with animals, okay. Oh, we stick with animals, okay. Additional questions or comments?
I'll just say I'm on the health board for us. And on the NCACC, we've advocated over the years for being able to get legislation to terminate parental rights sooner. The hardest thing in 30-plus years of law enforcement is pulling a kid out of a safe arms and forcing it back to an abuser that's been given too many chances. And we don't have enough foster families. And we've got to, you know, continue advocating for domestic adoptions to be cheaper. It's a shame in this country that domestic adoptions are more expensive and harder than international adoption. We've got plenty of kids that could be adopted if the process was cheaper and easier. And so we have to, and we're trying to make that process. Of that and them have worked hard to streamline that at Social Services. And I know Melissa's on their board. But having five adopted and some of what, some of the hell they went through is something any child should never go through. And our systems and our courts and different processes are going to have to get to where we do not put these children back in the abuser's arms. And people that have a history, like the gentleman you mentioned, should never be around a kid again, period. You know, so we have to continue making the processes better. Social media is the devil for these kids, you know, bullying and all of the things that happen through that. We have a lot of suicides or suicide attempts and a lot of problems these kids deal with. My wife's a principal, she deals with calls regularly during the school year, you know, with the programs they have in place that call and off of social media pick out certain trigger words to get someone involved. And some of these parents are just not engaged with their children and have no idea what these kids are doing with devices and other things. It's really naive, but we have to just continue advocating where we can. But, you know, that's very frustrating and challenging to see what our kids are growing up in today, you know. And we have to continue making our schools safer and advocating for all these resources that we have that are limited to help abuse kids, adoptions and things. Because I think, for me, that would be a goal for me is to get domestic adoptions cheaper and easier processes. Because there's a lot of kids that could be living in a good home right now that because of the process, it makes it unavailable to them cost-wise.
Yeah. Anything further? Would you like a motion to accept this report?
Yes, please.
Okay. Motion to accept this report, please?
Make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Stroud. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll see you at the next meeting. On the agenda, we do not have any public hearings, but management, at this time, I would like to ask you to go over our administrative matters, which we discuss at length during our four o'clock hour. We can be watching it, or you can come in person to hear more lengthy discussions on those. But for now, management, if you will give us a summarization of where we are with.
Absolutely. I'll go through all the items that were agreed to put on the consent agenda, and the board can approve those. And then we'll circle back to the other two that we held over for the six o'clock. So the first item was a briefing from solid waste on the Chief Thomas Road Convenience Site project, and that was for informational purposes only. There was a request from administration for approve, to approve a resolution to be the local government applicant to assist in obtaining grant funding for a stream stabilization project in partnership with Resource Institute Incorporated. This was agreed by consent with the addition of one agreement between the co-applicant, which is Resource Institute and Aridale County to clearly state the roles and responsibilities of both co-applicants. There was a request from the library to appoint an American 250 North Carolina committee. This would be a 12-person commission with subcommittees. A request from the Health Department for approval of revisions to the clinical services fee schedule, which was one addition or one correction, which is the APF serum test fee from $25 to $45. There was a request from administration for Phase One, excuse me, that one we're holding over for the six o'clock. A request from administration to approve budget amendment number one to appropriate and set aside future capital reserve fund balance for a one-time current expense appropriation to the educational entities if needed. This is the amount of $1,978,164. And again, this is a set aside if needed to be paid to the educational systems towards the end of the fiscal year. A request from administration for approval of the Lake Norman Regional Transportation Committee in our local agreement, and this was to add the town of Huntersville to that agreement in that committee. A request from administration for approval of the Kroger National Opioid Settlement. A request from administration to appoint one voting delegate and one alternate for the NCACC Annual Conference Meeting held on August the 10th, 2024. That appointment was Commissioner Haupt as the primary and Commissioner Brown as the alternate member. A request from Tax Administration for approval of the June 2024 releases and refunds. The board did review the county construction projects update. That was presented for informational purposes only. There was a request from administration for approval of the amended minutes from April the 2nd, 2019, and approval of the minutes from July the 16th and July the 23rd of 2019. There was a request from administration for approval of minutes from the Budget Workshop, which was held on May the 9th, 10th, and 14th of 2024, and the regular board meetings held on May the 21st, 2024, and June the 18th of 2024. There was one item that was added to the agenda, which is item 8.15, and that was to appoint Cindy Nicholson as deputy clerk to the board.
All right. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have unanimously approved the consent agenda. And now it'll take us back to the items that we were discussing with David Salibi in the four o'clock and did not complete. Shall we start back on those now?
Absolutely. The first item is a request from administration for Phase One design of the Aridale County Fairgrounds. And Mr. Salibi is here to make this or to continue this presentation to the board regarding the fairgrounds project.
And you lost your grandson.
Well, you know, every day, the same thing happens. When the sun goes down, you lose your shadow.
I see.
In the morning, your shadow's back.
Back again.
So I'll see him the March 7th.
Wonderful. And he will be hitting the field, out in the field with.
He's in the field all day tomorrow.
Excellent.
And that's okay.
Well, then you've got the spotlight now until we finish our discussions.
All right. Well, where would you like for me to begin?
Do you remember what you've said already?
I've written down, I have written down what I said I said. How's that?
They have mutated from that somewhat.
Well, it moved on, but I can at least present it again. And then the discussion can pick up wherever. How's that?
All right, board, are we comfortable with beginning back on fairgrounds conversation?
All right, just a minute. Everybody needs something to look at. This was the main slide here. Let's leave it up. This is master plan phases one through four, Aridale County Fairgrounds, Troutman. On September 26, 2022, Aridale County entered an agreement with CPNL Architect, Engineering, and Planning of Charlotte for master planning of the Aridale County Fairgrounds project. The attached contract, which were amendment, which was in your packet and also in front of you tonight, with CPNL is for programming, schematic, design, engineering, construction drawings, and contract administration for Phase One of the Fairground project. And that's Phase One, as we presented it. Phase One includes an agriculture center, and I'll just point this out to make it a little easier, which would also include spaces, if needed, for parks and recreation staff to manage and maintain the property. Associated parking, and that's the grayed area that we have here. And that parking replaces the parking that would be taken or moved if we built the agriculture center. And minor sprucing up, I'll call it that for a better word, of the existing facilities. The scope will also include an outdoors farmer's market with a drive-up vendor setup on the fairgrounds with accessible restrooms. The budget for Phase One is $16 million. The board is being asked tonight to consider approval of a contract amendment with CPNL for programming, design, engineering, and construction administration of the Aridale County Fairgrounds project for $1,262,125. And we're asking that you appoint the county managers to sign the agreement on behalf of the board. So I will say again, questions? I think we presented this earlier. It was the overall view of the site. It's always a reference point for me is the cat's patch.
One for me just a minute.
One more? I don't, there is nothing before.
Back where you were.
Oh, okay. Excuse me.
There you go.
That one?
The square is in the rectangle in the center there in twain degree.
Here?
Right there. That's going to be the new midway, right?
That is the midway, as it is now, just about.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at the overlayment, and it's not exactly like that.
Well, but that is, that is the midway, yes.
That's the current midway. And in the master plan, it is to try to keep it the same, about the same place. So we won't have to do a lot of grading or anything. And the plan was.
But what, I mean, I'm looking at.
Understand.
The overlayment right there.
Right. This is, this is the midway right here.
Right. So we're going to change it over to that rectangle.
If you, if we stay with this current plan, then it would be shifted Plan East, which is true east.
So what I'm saying is, so in Phase One, we're not going to disrupt the asphalt that's on the midway now. If, if you'll go back one picture.
If you'll see some of that midway, you can kind of see it right there where David's going.
Right.
So some of that end of the midway would be under parking.
Right. And I understand what I'm asking you is, the new midway would be totally in that rectangle.
Yes.
Is Phase One count to repave the walkway around that? The path that we have now?
No. Repaving that is not included in Phase One.
Okay.
We haven't got that far in design.
I'm just curious. I mean, I didn't know.
All of it is.
Mr. Haupt was talking about, I mean, we've been working on this for actually six years. I mean, it's been a long time, and it is time to get this thing going. But there's a lot of questions, as Mr. Haupt was talking about earlier and at the four o'clock hour, that, you know, we don't know yet. And we've got to continue, now we got to go back to getting to our meetings, figure this out. And, you know, I want, I was curious about what, where that's going to be and how it's going to be.
David, if you'll flip over one picture. That's what is looked at for Phase One, depending on how far money will go. So we may not be able to do some of the far end parking over there. We may not be able to do all that. We may just have to gravel that. We may not be able to pave it at that point. But that's, that's the point of having it designed and moving forward to try to get more accurate pricing on how far we can go with the $16 million.
That's what we talked about when we, you know, we were putting a farmer's market somewhere. There's no specific identified place at this time. But we talked at four o'clock about potential areas that you could put that. And keep in mind, you know, when the Fairgrounds Committee goes back and meeting and reports back to the entire board here, what we've got to do is make sure that we, because we put $5 million in this budget as a backup on top of the $16 million if we have to dip into it. Hopefully, we won't. But I want to make sure that we try to have sufficient parking for that Phase One, and we have a dedicated investment for the farmer's market that's a nice usable place since where Ag County, Commissioner Conley talked about that earlier. That's a priority for our citizens in our county with the ag background that we have. So when the Fairgrounds Committee reconvenes after tonight at some point and looks at the, you know, going into the scope and task and all the things we mentioned at four o'clock, is we'll be able to report later back when you report back to us as the drawings, and you'll have more idea for the farmer's market parking, as Scotty mentioned, and what that budget looks like.
Okay, I got to, I don't mean to interrupt. Why are we going back to the Agricultural Committee when they've already recommended this? This was a $60 million at the time.
Right. Project.
Project that we cannot afford. We've already, as a board, agreed to do the 16, and we got five sitting there. So my recommendation would be to go ahead and to go ahead and go with this tonight. Give David and Beth the okay to go ahead and do what they need to do as far as seeing what we can put here, where we can put the farmer's market. I think the hotel part does not need to be overlooked as far as putting the farmer's market there. That way, we're not having to tear something out later on because that concrete thing worries me. But there's no sense in throwing this back to another committee when the committee's already decided this is what they decided on. We cannot afford that. We need to roll with this thing and roll with it, and let's get on with it.
There's, there's, excuse me, there's a couple of things that I would like to say is that what we have, and it's always a danger to show a picture because it becomes gospel. Just like throw out a number, and all of a sudden, it becomes it. This was a conceptual idea, okay? Conceptual ideas, that's all it is. And the second thing I want to say is that when CPNL brought us the proposal, we didn't have a lot of extra meetings. We added those meetings into the scope of their proposal so they would have more time with you guys and with your steering committee or whatever you're using, knowing that this is probably not going to be it. And since it's so countywide, such influence countywide, there was going to be a lot of input even once we got started. And that unfortunately just becomes gospel, and it's not it. This is the idea. So just remember that those meetings were put back in the scope that you read about because we knew there was going to be plenty of back and forth.
That's what I'm saying. We mentioned at four o'clock about sending it back there, but I don't disagree with what Bert said. We kind of have the marching orders, and we knew the public inputs from the previous meetings that the committee had had. So instead of wasting that time, we know our budget. The most important thing that you and Beth can report back to us is how much can we do for the $16 million budget? If sprucing up existing building and property, that building, putting a farmer's market somewhere, where would that be best suited? And what does that look like? And I don't disagree with what Bert said. I was just, at four o'clock, we mentioned going back to these meetings that may not be needed. I don't disagree with what Commissioner Conley said.
Yeah, I, same place, don't need to reinvent the wheel. The question I do have, and again, my conceptual thought was the concrete pads are there. Well, so first off, I guess someone has to tell us, is that feasible? Is that usable? If it's a leveling issue, can it be, what's?
Save money or cost money to use those?
Yes. So that's the question. And as I kind of look at this overlaying, when I was talking about earlier, looking at the overlays, is where that concrete, at least that first concrete slab, is that actually already been taken up by where the parking area is?
And that's one of the things that we would have CPL look at. It may be that that concrete pad.
Is in our way.
Maybe not. Maybe, maybe they can build that into the corner of the building. So you can go from, if you have an outdoor farmer's market, you can have an indoor component as well. That's what CPNL will do to try to see if, one, if the existing concrete pads are in good shape, then we can tie that into the agricultural building and maybe have them connected in some way, and you can use the restrooms in the agricultural building. So that's, that's what we're going back to them to ask them to design and incorporate.
In my concept, in my vision, is there would be, other than foot traffic and tables, there would be nothing additional there. So, you know, maybe if there's, because of foot traffic, whatever, they're polished or they're coated to level them out, but.
They would need leveling because it, those pads were poured many, many years ago, and there's different elevations. I will say that we were asked to make sure that it was vendor accessible. And if you, and if you remember the fair, when we had that building there, people would back up, remember? There was all the tents down that side, which makes all that accessible on one side. On the backside, you've got a straight bank. But on that side, it is accessible for multiple pickups or cars, kind of like down here at the farmer's market here, where they back in, and then you could walk down the middle. It's kind of like the exhibit hawk used to be, if you remember that.
Point two, where the parking on the right side of the screen stops for Phase One is the one to the left, right there.
Excuse me? Excuse me?
Right there. Would y'all be okay in at least getting a price as alternate one, to get a price on the parking area he's pointing to now, all of that, because if we can afford it while they're doing grading, even if we gravelled it, I'm talking about, get us an alternate price on grading, and at least graveling it for overflow parking.
It's pretty much gravel now.
Yeah.
I think that's what we get back to meetings, that's what-
Right.
This part is red clay.
Yeah.
Right.
This is, this is what was leveled, and we did geotechnical borings on it, and this is the part during the mule show, that has all the dooleys in it, Scotty, with mud, if you recall that, okay?
I guess that's what I'm saying, if the, if the rest of the board's okay with it, get us a price on, as an alternate one for Phase One, of at least making that usable with gravel and all, where it's not muddy, that then they're gonna drive back on to your new parking lot from Phase One as they exit, and track all of that mess on there. So it's not something we have to do, but if y'all are okay with that, I'd like to look at just making that usable with gravel and grading-
If you-
During Phase One as alternate, we could look at.
If you recall our projects, when we bring you those projects, we always bring you alternates.
Right.
And y'all make the decision on the alternates.
Right, you know, by the time we get this started, before we even get halfway done, we're gonna be into another year, and hopefully we'll be able to put another five million in it, so then we'll be up to that ten million mark, and we can pretty much take care of a lot of stuff.
Well, hopefully our state representatives will get us some money.
Well, and another five million there.
Well, they need to actually do more, because if you look at representatives around counties around us, I mean, I looked at, I read an article about Jason Sane-Levin, and they were building fire departments and everything else.
Well, maybe we need to work on that.
Yeah, yeah.
To answer your question, if we started now, we would bid this time next year. Bidding would start this time next-
I think hopefully, Scotty, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the representatives are willing to go to bat for us, but they said we need to commit and use the ten, it's front already that they got for more, and to Bert's point, that I mean-
They were looking to move it as well, and to take it from us and everything else, trying to hold us hostage. So y'all can take up for the representatives, I won't, not to a certain extent whenever they, they get into that, and I don't wanna get them off-
Yeah, I don't wanna take up for them, I'm just saying that what was told to us, I think, was to commit and use what we're doing now, and then it makes it easier on for them to advocate with their colleagues in Raleigh for additional money, if you've committed and have something to use it for.
As David said, we're a year away from bidding, we need to start this thing, this is where it starts at tonight.
Yeah.
So we need to get started, we need to go back to our meetings, and, and then we'll be bringing things back to the board, me and Melissa.
I'm just not seeing the need for the meetings, I think we move forward with the, with the-
The drawings.
The drawings.
That's what I'm talking about, but see, some of the meetings, like, you know, the one time, they met with us about the agricultural building, maybe putting a mezzanine in the one end to put offices above it, so there's some things like that, that we need to meet to tie in, so that's the reason we-
Maybe just have them get with y'all, and maybe have them do some alternates, that could be some alternatives, right?
Well, they may have figured that already in on the price, 'cause I think that was in one of our meetings.
They've given a couple of ideas, but again, the space has to be programmed.
Right.
And depending upon, you know, how, how many offices we want in there, how many breakout rooms we want in there for, you know, smaller functions or whatever, that's gonna, that's gonna predicate the price. So that's what the programming and what the piece is to actually design the building, and what that's gonna look like, and what it's gonna-
We just need to get started.
Yep.
I mean, the investment that we're committing to, I think most of y'all would agree, have been positively accepted by the public, that if we do it right, within a budget as we go, that doesn't scare them like one big price tag at one time. And agriculture counties, starting with ag building, a farmer's market, and other things that you could use that building for, multipurpose wise, they could bring revenues in to the county for, you know, different things, our restaurants and hotels and other things that benefit from people being in Aridale County spending their money. So that's why I say it's a good investment, we just have, we just have to do what we can do within our budget.
So circling back around to a request for this evening, is a request from administration for Phase One design of Aridale County Fairgrounds. Have we gotten all questions answered to the comfort level?
And to approve the contract with CPNL for Programming, Design, Engineering, and Construction Administration for the one point, the one million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five, and to authorize the county manager to sign.
So you need that as a motion?
That's tonight's motion, that's, I'm good with that, and then they're gonna get back with us on, on the information.
Okay, so that is all in bold in your packets. Commissioner Brown has made that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are unanimous on that motion.
Thank you, David.
David, you can't go anywhere yet, because you're not done.
I'm gonna use a Greek word, which means I'm glad that one's over.
Don't speak too soon, because-
Well, that one.
That, okay, that one.
That one's over, okay.
So David has the next item, which is a request from administration for approval of the Aridale County Government Center entrance, entrance project. So David, I'm gonna let you start this presentation to the board.
Glad to, Beth, one other thing on the previous one, you took copious notes.
I did.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And Cindy did too, so we're good.
One thing I'll say too, I'm gonna steal Beth's quote, she uses it a lot, measuring five times and cutting once saves money, and I think that's, making sure you guys are clear on our expectations, that we're trying to carry out for the citizens, I think that's important.
And to piggyback on that, measure once, cuss twice.
Cut, it could cut some more than twice.
Just make sure you cut that hotel.
We will do, this is, well, we will do what the board asks.
Just, just for the record, I wanna make sure I'm clear, that was not in the motion, so that's the intent of the board. The bet's not in Phase One either, the hotel's not in Phase One.
Needs to be taken out completely.
Well, thank you, give us, I think in the design options, I think you give us options of where to put different things, and we pick from there.
All right, let's move on to-
I can leave that out or whatever.
The entrance, please.
Entrance project, in 2021, county administration was charged with designing an ADA accessible entrance for the Aridale County Government Center, that's right outside these windows on this side. The project included handicap parking spaces, a prominent ADA entrance, accessible restrooms, and lobby area. In keeping with the government center security plan, a new entrance project will provide a secure ADA reception area. These improvements will follow the Aridale County ADA accessibility plan. Edifice Construction worked with Fuller Architectural in the design, constructability reviews, and bidding for this project. Now, I'll stop just to kinda refresh your memories on the, on, on the pictures, because what took us a little while to get from 2021 to 2024 on this, was changes that the board asked us to make. So you will recall these pictures, and this is our prominent entrance, which would be right between the buildings, going into where the south wing is now. If you look back, on the other side, we've got, and I'll show you on the plan, ADA parking on this side, an entrance plus a ADA accessibility to the ramp, it goes, a covered ramp or covered canopy area that would enter the new lobby, south wing area. Just another plan view of what this would look like. Right now, this is somewhere in the vicinity of where the old file building used to be right outside, now there's just a foundation and pad, okay? So that's kinda where we're at. I will show you the plan, and then there's alternates also included in your packet. The original plan that we were asked to look, look at, included the yellow area, it's still yellow, yellow area which had handicap accessible parking, it had the ramp area right here, this is kinda where you're sitting now, so this is the entrance from the front, that would be covered, also with steps and a ADA accessible walkway into a new lobby, and if you know where the south wing is now, not quite where the windows are, if you were coming from this side, is about right here. So the restrooms are ADA accessible, accessible, accessible to the public, and take up part of the south wing as we know it. The rest of this whole area is your, is your lobby, okay? Then you've got a new, well, it's not new, it's just moving the walls, but it's actually the work to have a different location for the, for the boardroom or access, or the south, what we will, I guess still call it the south wing conference room. We'll have, we'll have a reception area, right now the receptionist sits right here. We'll have a reception area, that reception area that moves out into the lobby, it'll be secure, it'll be glassed, but, but this person will have view of the entire lobby area, board area, restrooms, this entrance, this entrance which is, goes right into the building now. You'd have a courtyard, really, the courtyard is just a raised area, kinda right outside these windows. And then this is, and this was our base, our base bid that we were asked to, to come up with, and it's also the, the, kinda the plan that we agreed on within, you know, in the past year, as a, as a group, and I think the board has seen this before. There, since then, a lot of activity right outside that way at the Vance Hotel, we have, we are being fenced out and fenced in, and we're not gonna have the accessibility and parking there like we thought. We will have up by 220 Cafe, we'll, we still have the alleyway, and we still have this little alleyway that, that you, if you can make the turn, goes behind 220, the bicycle shop, Wells Fargo, and, and the apartments. And right now, to get into this, our parking area, actually, it's, it's actually up in here, to get in our parking area, you'd have to come down the alleyway, because we don't go through the Vance covered walkway anymore, or covered driveway anymore, we'd have to make a turn, and then we get into here. A lot of this is gonna be disturbed during construction over the next several years with the Vance work. Actually, the entire parking lot that's on top of the building is getting ready to come down within months, I think, so that whole area is shutting down. So alternate one, which, which looked easy, but it's a little complicated, because that's where all the electrical power comes into all of our facilities, plus there's a grade change, is to tie the veterans, Brad, you know where this one is, is veteran entrance here, tie that parking lot, which goes on out into here, tie that parking lot into this parking lot, okay? So, so we would be able to come, let me get this thing straight, I don't-
Off of Court Street.
Yeah, you would come off Court Street, wide enough to get right in to our handicap accessible parking, but you'd also still have a, a narrow entrance, but a way to get out, down the alleyway and back out to South Main. Follow that? So that is alternate one, and that's in your packet. Alternates two and three was that we are upfitting all of this, and this area here, it was, was left untouched. Our finishes and our carpet and, and such doesn't, won't match, and that's fine with me, because I don't see colors in carpet, but alternates two, I'm not sure which ones, one is to, is to continue that carpet throughout the upper floor, and then the other alternate is to paint that, that area. While we're in there, just finish it out, and then, and then as we know that building interior wise, it's finished. And then the alternate four, these windows aren't as old, in the south, and the, and the annex is not as old as these were, these was eighteen ninety-nine, this is nineteen sixty-six, not, not energy efficient, if you've been in them, Brad, you've had them, you know what I'm talking about. So there's an alternate to replace those windows with energy efficient windows that don't open, because I think that some of them have that, and also those windows will also match these windows, which makes the entire building complete. That whole area will be finished, at least for the another sixty to seventy years. So that is, and, and there are nineteen windows, what we call storefront windows, and those will match the storefront of the new Breeze Way entrance area that, that ties into this building, wherever, I've lost it.
So David, alternate one-
Yes, sir.
Also, you know, like you said, it's where all the power comes in, that's where the backup generator is, how, are, are we gonna have to make any movement, any change, anything to the-
Good question.
To the generator?
Okay, generator does not move, we've been able to work around the generator.
Okay.
We've already started, just because things are really getting complicated with the Vance, we've already started moving electrical stuff in preparation for this, if we wanna do it. We've also, we've, we have moved quite a bit, communication lines off of all that. We've removed all the, all the communication lines coming in here, we've reloaded gas lines, so we've cleared this area out, it is ready for what we wanna do.
What will we lose? So I'm thinking of that back line-
Yes.
Along the veterans area, I'm gonna call it veterans parking.
Yes.
What, how many spaces will we lose there for parking?
Brad, I-
To accomplish.
I, I don't know that we will lose maybe one on the, up here, maybe.
On the upper side, on the slope.
Upper side, veterans parking, if anything, it could be one, and it's, and it's a handicap parking right now, which we will pick it up handicapped here, but it's not all of this green area.
Right.
Now, it will be impacted during construction, we'll make a nice mess back there, but when we finally put it back together, we may lose one here, don't know yet, I mean, it's, it's pretty well laid out in a plan.
What, what is the, we have alternate prices here, and the option one, and then alternate prices one through four, what is the deadline? When you, if you start, if it was approved tonight, if the deadline, what is starting option one, and at what point are we, we, would we have the deadline to agree on alternate one, two, and three, and four? If we put that in future budget years, or if we decided to set aside money, like we're talking about the fairgrounds?
Okay.
What's the deadline?
That's, that's another good question. This project was very complicated to bid, there, our contractors are a lot very hungry right now, so they weren't going after it. We bid the project four times, just tried to get it down to where we wanted, okay? Now, those bids were good through June twenty-first, okay? Knowing that we were coming tonight, and knowing that we finally got a number that we can do something with, our contractor, our, our, our CMR, Edifice, talked with all their subs, and their bids are good, now, these bids are good until the end of this month.
So they agreed to hold the price-
Yeah, hold their price till that-
Knowing that we were coming to the board this evening.
Now, alternates-
How long are the alternate, I guess the question for us would be, how long are the alternate prices good for?
End of this month.
End of the month.
End of the month still.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, the, the, if you look at alternate two, three, and four, you're, you know, I mean, you hate sitting here talking, I'd love to have an extra five hundred dollars in my bank account, but when we look at alternate two, forty-eight thousand dollars for the carpet, remove and replace, the paint, again, ten thousand. I can tell you, having lived here as a, as a director employee, given the circumstance going on with the Vance Hotel, I cannot see us moving forward without alternate one, to guarantee us the access that we need. That's, that's my opinion, having been here, watching disabled veterans struggle, watching disabled people that weren't veterans trying to access this building, this building is a security and accessibility nightmare. It's a wonderful old building, love it, but it's a nightmare for all those other things. So, you know, for me, it's alternate one, having been here, having parked there, having spent more time in that, that back parking lot than probably anybody, I can't see it us, if we're gonna do this, alternate one's gotta happen.
I think we, I think we've got the money to do all for alternates, because it's gonna be cheaper to do it while you got the numbers, and while they're here doing construction, because, and you're, and the problem is, while they're doing the Vance, if you get it done while they're here, you're gonna disrupt downtown businesses and, and-
Yep.
And traffic and all these other things at one time, and it's over. I mean, that's my thinking.
I'm supportive of all, but I'm telling you, if we're gonna do it at all, if you're gonna, if you're gonna break anything off-
Yeah.
It'd be, it'd be two, three, and four, or any portion. it'd be two, three, and four or any portion. But one, in my opinion, has got to happen.
That was actually the second part of his presentation.
Because I can tell you, if we don't, we're reliant on someone else to have access. And in that timeframe of Vance, whatever's going to happen there, we may not even have the alleyway. So then we have a piece of property we can't even use accurately or openly if it exists.
This project, unlike the previous project, can start now. Okay? Actually, we would start moving our entrance to this main entrance down here like we did before, if you remember. But there's one thing to keep in mind on all projects. In 2021, we were charged with doing this. 2022, from the 2022 estimates from professional estimators, not us, it increased 13% in one year. From 2020, that's to 2023. From 2023 to 2024, bid time in August, it increased 9%. So that is what you're looking at. We've always used 10% a year rule of thumb increases. And Bert was the same thing on that jail. Because when we started years and years ago, we finally got to where we went. You know how it happens. So 10% a year is a good rule of thumb.
Yep.
David, on this project, where you've got the line showing with the construction area, all the way up to the very top there, where is Vance Hotel construction line? Will they be coming? Will the two meet up?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there, do you have any indication of a timeline? Is it going to encroach, cause any issues, or can they go on simultaneously without too much of a?
They can go on simultaneously. They won't encroach on us and we won't go outside of our fence. The only thing is that this area, at the level it is now, could be, please, don't put that. Could be the second level of the parking deck. Which is why everything's really getting tore up. So we, that right here.
That's a tight space to work in.
Well, we will put up our construction fence and we will stay within that fence.
And you would have to anyway, just because it's.
We have to. That's correct.
Okay.
I mean, for me, Beth's just double-checked and it's 3.4 million to do all of it, including all four alternates. And based on the increasing cost of construction and the things I mentioned before, the challenges of coming and going and starting, I'm good with doing it all at one time and just approve it and do it. Because it's kind of like Jennings Park. I mean, it's costing money upfront, but it's saving money in the long run. If you look at it from the business perspective. So, I mean, Madam Chairman, if they're okay, I'll make a motion to approve the project as presented with all four alternates, with the budget of the 3.4 as presented because they're honoring that price through now.
They're honoring that price through the end of July. And we're asking you also to appoint the county managers to sign it.
Now, understand, I'll need to come back with a budget amendment for the board to approve because what this presentation was, was which alternate you want us to go with so we can go ahead and let the contractors know. But I'm going to have to bring a budget amendment for the total amount to actually solidify that. We don't have the budget amendment.
So we will not sign a contract till the first meeting, after the first meeting of August.
What we could do.
What we could do is tell them.
Yes, we could go ahead and tell them that we're going to move forward. However, if Ms. Valdez tells me it's okay, we could get the, since we're recessing to the report to the people, we could approve that budget amendment at the report to the people Monday and still meet the deadline and all of that since it's a carryover and we're recessing and meeting on the 22nd. Are you okay with just approving that budget amendment?
You might want to recess to an earlier time since there starts at six and just say that later. But yes, I think that's.
Okay, then we could approve that budget amendment on the 22nd.
At five, we need 5:30? How long do you need to add?
We could either do that or you could do that after the report to the people is over, you could do that one item and then adjourn the meeting. It's up to the board, which you would prefer to do.
We advertise at six for the meeting to begin.
True.
We'll do it at 5:30. And we can handle the budget amendment at 5:30. If that's.
I say let's do it at four.
Are you advertising that meeting or are you just recessing?
We're recessing to that meeting.
Just need to recess tonight to a time specific.
Okay.
It's not being advertised.
5:30, we've covered this.
We'll recess to 5:30 on Monday.
All right, so we've got a couple loose ends. We have a motion on the floor. Commissioner Hopp, is everyone clear on the motion that he was presented with the options and all alternates?
And give Beth authority to sign the agreement.
Yep.
All right.
We need it.
Any further discussion or questions on that? All right, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous on Hopp's motion on that one. Manager Moll, are you clear with what has been stated?
Yes, ma'am.
Also, to wrap up this for the budget amendment, that'll take place at 5:30 at the cooperative extension directly before the 6 o'clock at reports of people Monday, 22nd. All right, are we done with David or shall we have him do anything else?
We're done with David.
As we say after every bluegrass set of music, it ended.
It ended.
It ended.
Positive.
Thank you. You need a 10 minute? We can, yeah. All right, a 10 minute break? All right, we will reconvene at 7:26.
All right.
We got our mics back on. We are back and ready to begin again. Let's go back into our agenda to see where we are. Got back up, turn the next page. And we are to, we do not have any announcements of vacancies on boards or commissions. However, item number 10, Manager Moll, would you go over the appointments?
Absolutely.
Boards and commissions.
We do have two appointments and this is to the Centralina Workforce Development Board. Mark Brady and Charles Chalice have both volunteered to serve again. If the board will remember, at our June 18th meeting, we appointed Brenda Spees. We reappointed her. So she is not willing to serve again, so we need to rescind that appointment and then appoint the two that I just read. So those will be the two appointments for the Centralina Workforce Development.
Brenda is retired.
Correct.
All right, we'd like a motion to.
Make a motion to rescind the appointment of Brenda Spees to the Centralina Workforce Development Board and appoint Mark Brady and John Chalice to those two positions.
Motion by Commissioner Hopp. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are unanimous on that appointment. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Is there any unfinished business? This is a public comment period. It is the second meeting of the month. And the board conducts a public comment period. It's the second regular meeting of each month. The purpose of the public comment period is to allow citizens to speak on matters related to county governance. Each speaker that has signed up is allotted three minutes and will be called to the podium by the chair and the order names appear on the sign-in sheet. Please state your name and address before beginning your comments. Comments are directed to the board as a whole. Responses by the board are at their discretion, but public comment period is not intended to be a question and answer period, but rather a time for the board to hear from the public and take such matters raised under advisement. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and not engage in slander or name-calling. Citizens should not discuss any of the matters which are closed session matters, including but not limited to matters regarding personnel or matters which are made confidential by law. Speakers who have prepared written remarks or supporting documents are engaged, encouraged, they are not engaged, they are encouraged to leave a copy of such remarks and documents with a clerk to the board. At this time, I will open the public comment period. And we only had Jack, who was an actual speaker this evening, had signed up and he's already spoken. So I don't believe, does anyone else here have a burning desire to speak this evening? Seeing and hearing that, I'm going to close the public comment period. And we will continue with our agenda this evening.
Madam Chair, I made an error on our agenda. I failed to add commissioner comments. And that is supposed to be the next item and I apologize for that.
We've already run our mouth enough to not.
That's a fact. It's a fact.
On that one, because Commissioner Hopp brought that to my attention, I apologize.
Oh, did he?
Really?
I apologize.
I did it properly. I did it properly.
It's my first agenda, bear with me. But I apologize. I will make sure that that's all future agendas.
Set off by any means. However, at this point, does anyone have any updates they would care to share?
Better not.
It's been a rather busy summer. But at this point, I will say we've covered a lot of material this evening and I will save it for an update in our August meeting for community events. So anyone else, everybody's good. I'll pass it to Manager Moll for your, I'm sorry, that takes us to new business. Any new business we have?
Madam Chair, I do.
So Vice Chairman Conley, you have new business.
I know we've discussed some things about the courthouse, need of courtroom space, especially for Superior Court room. I was going to wait and talk to everyone and bring this up in a discussion in our August meeting. But I start to look at the fatality prevention team, the report here, of one homicide of a birth to one-year-old. The victim of that case is obviously deceased. And it's sad that we live in a country, a world, that those type of things happen. But there's still family members that are associated with that homicide.
And what year was that?
I didn't even.
So that was a back year.
Yeah, that was a back year.
That was at least '23.
Well, from '22 to '23.
Yes, okay.
And we have a jail that's capable of holding 500 people. We have exceeded by 470 plus. Last few days currently, yes. Over 470 people. We are running Superior Court, still in the 1970s way of doing court in the county, that we have exceeded a population of over 200,000 people. Judge Crosswhite came, we know we have Will Long, Superior Court Judge. We have Joe Crosswhite as a Superior Court Judge. And we are getting an additional Superior Court Judge. With nowhere to put that person. We are running Superior Court. Judge Crosswhite came and spoke to all of us and said that if we had the court space to do it, we could do it. He could get that other judge in here. We could start knocking out cases. Looked at some of our jail numbers and that has been shared. I gave everything to our clerk. She'd have shared everything. I looked at some numbers today. 1,827 days in custody, 1,715, 15 days in custody, 1,625, 1,385, 1,286. That's our top five people that taxpayers are paying for in this county.
Number of days incarcerated.
Number of days that they have been in jail.
That we're paying.
1,827 days, our top person. Those five people total up to 7,838 days tied up jail beds for five people. And they do have some serious charges. But at the same time, they are locked up. But what about the victims? What about the victims? What about the victims' families? What about everybody that's tied to this? We have so many people that's coming to this county that's growing. People say that we can have night court, you cannot have jurors to come in for day court, much less hardly, wanting to come in for night court. They have families, they have everything. We've got to start acting like we're a big county, we've got to start sending people to prison. We've already sent over 30-some people to prison this month, and we're just halfway into it, we even want the holiday. So the numbers are churning out, the people, but as more people come to this county and our law enforcement agencies, from the Sheriff's Office to our police departments, Highway Patrol, game warden, everyone, we are serious on crime. We are serious on public safety. And we've got to have a place to try these people, to get court-conducted. If we have a Superior Civil Sessions going on with malpractice, everything that goes on, Lisa, you know that, that takes a long time. If they don't break down and you cannot squeeze some criminal time in, guess what? That courtroom is tied up for that civil the entire time. And if you've got a two-week term of civil, that's two weeks that you're not seeing people that's locked up, you're getting cases done. We have thousands upon thousands upon thousands of cases that are pending in court between District and Superior Court. So with that said, I know we have had some discussion in some of our retreats and some of the discussions we had about courtroom space. So with that said tonight, I would like to make a motion and authorize the county manager to reach out, to get an RFQ started, to start about courthouse expansion, courtroom expansion, that we can expand out Superior Court especially. And I would like to make that motion tonight. And I was not going to do that motion until end August, but you know, I sit here and start looking at a kid that's getting basically murdered, and we've got to get these people, you heard what she said, someone on probation from a previous incident, and it's still around children.
Will you explain, you and I have talked about it, but for the public, will you explain the, you and Judge Crosswhite have talked about the inadequacies of having Superior Court space to try these cases because no room for jurors and different, the challenges between the, some people don't understand when you say uses, it requires certain things for Superior Court trials than it does District Court.
Superior Court trials, if you have a murder trial, you have anything where you've actually got an actual trial, and you've got a jury that's coming in, you've got different sets of jury pools. You're not going to just say, hey, I need 12 people that are going to come in. You're going to run a batch up to 75 folks, the morning time, then you may run a batch of 75 the afternoon, or even the next day. So it's a process, and if you've got a long extended trial, especially murder trials and a trial that's going to take an extensive timeframe, you've got to be very careful in your jury selection. Because granted, some people, they do want to be on jury duty, but granted, a lot of people do not want to be on jury duty. A lot of people cannot afford to be on jury duty when it comes down to it as well. And it's very hard to find impartial jurors, impartial people, especially in today's world, especially when you have these, everybody sees everything that's going on. If MD Webster back in the back does something wrong, it's going to be all over Facebook, it's going to be all, everything. And look at all the people, look at all the people that know, look at all the people that know him. I mean, look at all the people that know the zoo man, Scotty Brown, you know, it's hard. You're going to go through a lot of different people to try to find, to set a jury. And it's just, we are still running court an old way. Yes, we have added an annex at the DA's office, but that's not a perfect place to have Superior Court trials, there's no way you can even do that there. We've got a courthouse in Mooresville that's got a courtroom, but it's very limited in what we can and what we cannot do. You cannot have jurors, well, today you're in Mooresville and tomorrow you're in Stagesville, it don't work that way.
No, we can't.
And what does it cost us per day to incarcerate?
Yeah, you're around $134 a day.
$134.
By the time you do direct and indirect costs.
Counting medical.
And if they're convicted and sent to prison, they're given credit for the time served here, that's on our dime, whereas if they're convicted and sent to prison?
It's on state.
On the state.
We can get them on the General Assembly's dime, the governor's dime, we can get them on them versus them sitting here. Because we just do not have the capability to do what we need to do with the size of county we are. And then Judge Crosswhite, he, I mean, he done very well when he came to the Act Center and he spoke to us about that. Very well.
If we don't do this, we're going to be looking at expanding your jail.
Right now, we've got a Superior Court, we've got two in the county right now, getting ready to get a third. You've got one that'll be here, then our second judge is going to be in another county helping them send people to prison and clear their jail space and clear their cases. And it's not just jail beds, you're clearing, you're killing, you're clearing the cases, you're clearing the backlog, and you're giving the victims closure, the victims what they need to do.
One of the challenges we have too, we talked about other, in our retreats and stuff, is right now, the largest mental health facility in the county is the jail. And that ain't good. Our jailers are having to deal with these people, and it's putting them at risk when there needs to be, you know, some long-term mental health facility options to move these people to for, if you're going to help them. Jail just locking them up with other people is just a dangerous situation as well, with the crowding up that they have, the capacity.
But we've got to see what our, what we can and what we cannot do on that side.
We've got to have a starting point.
Yeah, you've got to look at it.
We've got to have a starting point. We've got to see, this is not saying, let's do it today, by no means, but it's saying, let's allow the county manager to reach out, get an RFQ, throw it out, to see if we can get what we can and what we cannot do on that site that we presently have. Because we have got to get ahead. We are behind, and we are really, really behind. So we've got to try to catch up just a little bit, and this will be part of catching that up.
Manager Moll, are you clear on?
I am. I will say one thing. We are contracting with a consultant to do a space needs analysis. So part of that is to look at all of our facilities and determine space. So that is something that we're, that we're going to be looking, we've already put that out as far as an RFQ. So this would be to specifically look, what you're asking for is to specifically look how we could add to the existing.
Yes, ma'am.
Courtroom. And then that space needs analysis, that can fold into.
Into that, yeah, yeah.
Is that, am I hearing that?
Yes.
Correctly, okay.
You've made a motion, Vice Chairman.
Have to or attach to or?
Do we need that new motion if she's already done RFQ for space?
Well, that's for the space needs analysis, but if you're wanting, if you're wanting them to look specifically at the courthouse and how and where we could add on, that would be a little different.
Because it's such a challenge with that building.
And that's a priority, even more so exigent than the other space needs at this point. I mean, we think building a school's expensive if you add on that jail.
Yeah, buddy.
Yeah.
All right, so going back to the motion again, Vice Chairman Conley, is everyone clear on the request and the motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right, motion by Vice Chairman Conley, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I've got one adjustment, unless I'm wrong, on administrative matters number three for the resolution.
Are you good with this motion?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we're unanimous on that one?
We approved the resolution, we consented to the resolution.
Oh, I thought we had to come back and do it at six, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
She pulled it out of the packet to make it clear and visible.
There was a resolution tied to it.
Okay, got you.
Because that was item 8.3 that we were.
For some reason, I wrote it for six.
Yeah. Any papers on the desk there in front of you?
I know.
All right, so county manager?
Report? The only thing to report is the annual report to the people, cooperative extension, Monday, the 22nd, beginning, the report to the people is at 6 o'clock, but we will start at 5:30 to do the budget amendment.
On that one, okay. That takes us to closed session, which we have not completed yet, so we need a motion to go back into closed session.
Make a motion.
All right, everyone's excited about it, we ready to go, all in favor for closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Close session.
All right, we are back and now we're to the end of our agenda and at this time I'd like to ask for a motion to recess until Monday the 22nd at 5:30. It's cooperative extension.
So move.
Agreed by everyone? Do we have a, yes, do we have a, oh my gosh, my brain has gone dead.
All in favor.
All in favor, thank you. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed to this so we are recessed until Monday.
Okay, well guys, y'all have fun week next week.
That meeting is mandatory.
See, I will whack the gavel.